So, different than many meetings, at the reorg, I start the meeting. After that, the elected president will start it. So, at this time, I want to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Paulette O'Fryas.
Here.
Thomas Grattan.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Thomas Kennedy.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one-side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles. At this time, I am going to give the oath of office to our newly-elected board members, Paulette O'Fryas and Thomas Kennedy. Paulette? Yeah, it's okay, I got it. I, Paulette O'Fryas.
Paulette O'Fryas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the member.
The duties of the member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom? I just want to repeat it for me.
I, Thomas Kennedy.
I, Thomas Kennedy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the member.
The duties of the member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
And next, to the board of officers. I, Anthony Morrow. I, Anthony Morrow. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I support the Constitution of the United States. That I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of superintendent. The duties of superintendent. Of the South Hall Union Free School District. Of the South Hall Union Free School District. According to the best of my vote.
So, a motion to move to elections of officers?
I nominate Paulette O'Fryas, president, second.
First, let's have a motion.
No, you don't.
Oh, we don't?
The motion just to do that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Paulette O'Fryas, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Hi, Paulette O'Fryas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
So, a motion to move to elections of officers?
I nominate Paulette O'Fryas, president, second.
First, let's have a motion.
No, you don't.
Oh, we don't?
The motion just to do that.
I'm sorry.
Paulette O'Fryas, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, she asks for a motion for this?
No, I do, I do.
She does it from the...
Yeah, go see him.
Yep, for the vice president.
Is there a motion for vice president of the board?
I'll nominate Scott Latham, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Hi, Paulette O'Fryas.
Hi, Paulette O'Fryas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of vice president.
The duties of vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
Okay.
So, then Patty, we need a motion for the authorization, right?
We have a motion to authorize the vice president to act in legal matters in absence of the
president.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions?
Okay, we have the appointment of our officers. Our district treasurer, Jenny Sella.
Zella.
Clerk of the board, Patricia de Gregorio. Claims order to Serene and Associates. Did you guys do your oath, Patty?
Nope.
Are you going to do the oath, you and Jenny, tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Office to Patricia de Gregorio and Jenny Sella and the Board of Registars, Jen Brewer and Patty de Gregorio. Is there a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Jenny? Jenny?
Go ahead.
I, Jenny Sella. I, Jenny Sella. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of district clerk.
The duties of district clerk.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
Okay.
So, Patty, we need a motion for the authorization, right?
Okay.
We have a motion to authorize the vice president to act in legal matters in absence of the president.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Okay, we have the appointment of our officers. Our district treasurer, Jenny Sella.
Zella.
Clerk of the board, Patricia de Gregorio. Claims order to Serene and Associates. Did you guys do your oath, Patty?
Nope.
Are you going to do the oath, you and Jenny, tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Office to Patricia de Gregorio and Jenny Sella and the Board of Registars, Jen Brewer and Patty de Gregorio. Is there a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Jenny? Jenny?
Go ahead.
I, Jenny Sella. I, Jenny Sella. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of district treasurer.
The duties of district treasurer.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote. So, Patty, we need a motion for the authorization, right?
Okay.
We have a motion to authorize the vice president to act in legal matters in absence of the president.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Okay, we have the appointment of our officers. Our district treasurer, Jenny Sella.
Zella.
Clerk of the board, Patricia de Gregorio. Claims order to Serene and Associates. Did you guys do your oath, Patty?
Nope.
Are you going to do the oath, you and Jenny, tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Office to Patricia de Gregorio and Jenny Sella and the Board of Registars, Jen Brewer and Patty de Gregorio. Is there a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Jenny? Jenny?
Go ahead.
I, Jenny Sella. I, Jenny Sella. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of district treasurer.
The duties of district treasurer.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
Of the South Hall Union Free School District.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
Okay.
So, Patty, we need a motion for the authorization, right? School physicians will be Peconic Bay Primary Medical. School attorney, you guys okay if we put Ingerman and Smith in there? Scott, Tom, you okay with that? It says TBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we just did the RFPs.
Okay.
So, Chuck, I just want to confirm, when we got all the RFPs back, Ingerman was the lowest?
Correct.
And they're the firm that we've been with for over 20 years? Okay. So, then you guys, based on that, I would recommend we stick with them.
Okay. And Chris will be retiring, so we'll have somebody?
Yeah. We're going to have a transition there. You know, the attorney that has been working with us for many years informed us that they're going to be retiring at the end of this school year. The managing partner of Ingerman and I had a conversation, because I had worked with her in prior districts, and she told us that we can choose whichever attorney from their group that we've worked with, that we feel very comfortable with, to with us.
Do you need a recommendation from Chris?
Yep. We can get a recommendation from Chris, and then I can ask. Ideally, what I would ask is that whomever it may be come out and spend some time at exec and work with you guys so that you can feel comfortable, because ultimately, you know, the board really picks the attorney, you know? So, that's the way we'd set it up. And, you know, she told me that that's no problem, they'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. So, Patty, we'll put Ingerman and Smith in there?
Okay.
Great, thank you. School architect, Michael Guido Architect. Bond attorney, Hawkins Delfield and Wood. Fiscal advisors, Monistat Services. Independent orders, Cullen and Donowski. Our extra classroom activity funds, the K through six chief faculty advisors, Ellen Waldron O'Neill. Seven through 12 chief faculty advisors, Terrence Rush. Grades K through 12 central treasurer is Eric Keel. We have host of junior high activities and elementary, junior high and elementary activities. And I guess like the sports, if there's not enough students to participate, we don't run them, right?
Yeah, so we appoint them all, just like we appoint all the clubs. And then after our club fair, based on who signs up, you know, that's, and based on our sports teams, who signs up is what we run. So, we don't always run them. Sometimes we split them and run more than one.
Okay. Do you want me to read these?
You don't need to read them all. You can just read...
Okay. And then we have our hearing officers, our committee on special education, our committee on preschool special education. We're looking to readopt Nassau Suffolk County list of pre-approved school programs for three and four years old. The records access officer will be Patricia de Gregorio. The foils appeal officer will be Dr. Anthony Morrow. Records management officer will be Patricia de Gregorio. Asbestos designated will be Anthony Drabone. Five oh four accommodation compliance officer, Dr. Lisa Simonetti. Title nine officer, Dr. Anthony Morrow. Sexual harassment officer, Dr. Anthony Morrow. Purchasing agent, Charles Scheid. And the data privacy officer, Charles Scheid. So, we'll vote on those, and then the board committee doesn't require a vote. So, is there a motion to accept those?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, the board committees.
Policy right now is you and I.
I'd like to stay on that. I think we should work on some this summer, maybe two, Scott.
Paulette, are we limited to two members, chairman and a member?
Yes, because then you'd have a quorum. If you'd have, if there's three board members at a meeting, it'd be a quorum, so it'd have to...
Two per committee.
Two per committee. Audit committee?
Oh.
You know what?
I'm interested.
Okay. Tom Kennedy. Did we do one? Were you by yourself last show? Was it you and Tom?
No, I was on there last year.
One, you guys want to show Tom what to do on that one?
I can go on it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, the two Toms.
Okay.
Building committee, John was on that, so we need to replace John.
I'd like to go on there.
Okay.
I'll take that, too.
Okay, Brian Tobin, Tom Grattan. And negotiation, Scott, you still good on that one?
Yeah, we actually have a meeting next month.
Okay. And Tom Grattan, you expressed an interest in that one?
Yeah, well, I'm scheduled already for that.
Okay. So, Scott Latham and Tom Grattan on that. We don't have to accept these, right? Because these are just informational, Patty?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Now, we have some designations for our official bank depositories. Dine Savings Bank, Bank of America, Capital One Bank, Bank of New York. Authorization of the Cooperative Investment Program Liquid Asset Security Systems, otherwise known as CLASS. Our regular meetings will be the fourth Wednesdays of the month, and our work sessions will be the second Wednesday quarterly. The official newspaper will be the Suffolk Times and the News Review. A motion to accept those?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Authorizations, chief school officer to certify payroll. And do I have to read all these, or does everybody have all these?
I mean, everybody should have them, if you just want to read the headings or whatever.
Okay, chief school officer to approve budget transfers consistent with fiscal policy. Application for federal and state funds would be the chief school officer. I guess I better read them all, right? District treasurer to establish $100 petty cash fund. Authorization for single signatures on checks $10,000 or under, either Jenny Sella or Charles Scheid. And superintendent's signature as a second on all non-payroll checks over $10,000. In the absence of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent for business to sign. Chief school officer to authorize conference, conventions, workshop attendance. Authorization for assistant superintendent for business to make investment of school funds. Authorization for Monistat Services Inc. to act for the district as dissemination agent for the annual SEC filing. Authorization for the board president to appoint impartial hearing officers on behalf of the board to meet time requirement. The following people are to be signatories on the extracurricular accounts. Eric Keel, Charles Scheid, Terrence Rush, Ellen O'Neill. Is there a motion to accept those authorizations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the other items, readoption of all policies, authorizations, and code of ethics in effect during the previous year.
Just a discussion.
Sure.
When I looked at the policies online, it didn't spell out, I think it said like, you know, let me see if I have it, excuse me. It's also relevant to the board. It's employees, is it students and board members for the code of, for the code of ethics?
Yeah, so there's the code of ethics, which we spoke about today, and then there is also the code of conduct. Parts of the code of conduct are germane to students, and then parts are relative to everybody on our property. The code of ethics is relegated to employees and board members.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Adopt superintendent to make residency determinations. Follow IRS standard mile rate for business. Establish the tuition rate for new Suffolk students that shall increase at the annual South Hall School tax levy increase. That remains the same now that they're all coming here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It remains, it goes up whatever our levy is every year.
Okay, that's right. I thought we decided to keep it simple. Establish a meal allowance of a maximum of $45 per day reimbursement. Receipts acceptable to the assistant superintendent of business must be attached to the expense voucher for reimbursement. Establish substitute teacher rate for certified teachers at 135 a day and non-certified teachers at 125 a day. Nurse substitute rates 150 a day. Establish other substitute rates for teacher assistants, teacher aides, clerk typists, and custodians at 25 cents less the starting hourly rate in the current CSEA contract. Are we along with the other districts? Because I know it's a problem getting substitute teachers.
So, they're all over the map. I know the 125 for non-certified. My son worked that before his certification came through this year. It was the exact same number at an Up Island district. And he worked at Riverhead for $25 more in the same position. There are districts that are up to 175, 180. What I can tell you is, speaking with people, no matter how much they've raised their rates, they're still short substitutes. So, it hasn't made a huge difference. You know, it really just comes down to, there's a shortage of substitutes right now all over Long Island, and in certain areas, like some of your advanced sciences and advanced maths, there's a shortage of teachers in general. So, I don't, I don't, we're in the ballpark with other districts.
Okay.
You know, nearing the, we're near the bottom portion, but we're in the ballpark. But I don't think if you added $50 to each one of them, we would see much of a difference in how many substitutes we could get.
Okay. Just thought I said that. Thank you. Establish an out-of-district factoring rate at 125 a day. Establish a rate for translation for CSCs and parent-teacher conferences, 210 for a full day, 105 for a half day. And establish rate for election workers at a daily rate of $112. Is there a motion to accept these?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, it actually begins our regular meeting. At this time, if anybody cares to address the board, we ask that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anyone care to address the board now? Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from the regular board meeting of June 26. It also includes our financial matters, which some of them will be available at the August meeting, like the schedule of bills, the treasurer's report, the monthly budget status report. There are no transfers. The extra classroom activities report will be available in August. We have some contracted services for the upcoming school year. Scope UPK agreement, Scope After-School Child Care Program, Omni 403B, PLC Associates. And then is it to municipal, Patty? That can be part of this, or do we have to do that separately?
We could do it separate, which is up to you.
Okay, so let's do a motion on those other financial matters.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the Greenport School District for a shared music teacher, with each school district assuming 50% of all costs associated with such position.
Is this going to be our employee sharing with them, or their employee? Okay.
Same, yeah.
Okay.
Same situation as last year.
Or as in we share?
Our employee shared with them.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, it actually begins our regular meeting. At this time, if anybody cares to address the board, we ask that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anyone care to address the board now? Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from the regular board meeting of June 26. It also includes our financial matters, which some of them will be available at the August meeting, like the schedule of bills, the treasurer's report, the monthly budget status report. There are no transfers. The extra classroom activities report will be available in August. We have some contracted services for the upcoming school year. Scope UPK agreement, Scope After-School Child Care Program, Omni 403B, PLC Associates. And then is it to municipal, Patty? That can be part of this, or do we have to do that separately?
We could do it separate, which is up to you.
Okay, so let's do a motion on those other financial matters.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the Greenport School District for a shared music teacher, with each school district assuming 50% of all costs associated with such position.
Is this going to be our employee we're sharing with them, or their employee? Okay.
Same, yeah.
Okay.
Same situation as last year.
Or as in we share?
Our employee shared with them.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We didn't have any CSCs, right?
That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from the regular board meeting of June 26th. It also includes our financial matters, which some of them will be available at the August meeting, like the schedule of bills, the treasurer's report, the monthly budget status report. There are no transfers. The extra classroom activities report will be available in August. We have some contracted services for the upcoming school year. Scope UPK agreement, scope after-school childcare program, Omni 403B PLC associate. And then is intermunicipal, Patty? That can be part of this or do we have to do that separately?
We could do it separate, which is up to you.
Okay, so let's do a motion on those other financial matters.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the Greenport School District for a shared music teacher with each school district assuming 50% of all costs associated with such position.
Is this going to be our employee we're sharing with them or their employee we should share?
Same, yeah.
Okay.
Same situation as last year.
Or as in we share?
Our employee shared with them.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have any CSCs, right? All business. I just want to ask where we are on the cellphone policy because if we're going to make any changes, is it going to happen for this upcoming school year?
Yeah, so we've gathered information. I know Mr. Rush talked about, you know, making sure all of his classrooms have the pockets. It's similar to one that I have in the district office. And, you know, we're, right now, we're really monitoring the state because there's state chatter about whether they're going to make cellphones illegal in schools. So I'd like to see if they're going to make a decision on that. I don't know if the state will move that fast. So if they don't, you know, then we're looking to bring a group together early next year to try to decide how we want to manage it. You know, we have gathered a great deal of information. It's really all over the map. There are some districts that are banning cellphones. There are some that let them go as freely as there are no rules. There are some that not during instructional time. There are others. You know, it runs, it really runs the gamut. We did pull all of our disciplinary referrals from last year related to cellphones and we equated to less than I can count on one hand. You know, so do I believe kids rely on cellphones too much? Yes. And do I believe it's a good conversation for us to have and look at and decide what we're going to do? As far as it being a problem, it doesn't exist as a problem right now. You know, some teachers, you put your cellphone in the pockets when you walk into the room. I've observed in classrooms where they do that. And then you take it on the way out the door and, you know, you're not, you don't have access to it for the 38 minutes of the period. Other teachers, I've heard them say, put that away. If it comes out again, I got to take it. And they don't see it again. And, you know, we don't have kids fighting with teachers over cellphones. We don't have some of the difficulties that exist in some of the other places that feel a necessity to do it quicker than what we are. But, you know, we have gathered a great deal of research on it and we want to put together a team of teachers and kids. I've spoken to numerous kids at the superintendent advisory council and, you know, their take on it is really quite interesting. It's not unilaterally, we should be allowed to have cellphones. They do believe there should be some balance. You know, there was one student who said to me, I don't use my phone during class ever, but I really don't interact with many kids during certain periods. And if I didn't have a cellphone, I would be completely alone. A perspective that I never would have really thought about myself. So I think we need to gather more South Old information, couple that with the information we've gotten from around the island and then decide how we want to manage it. You know, we are going to put pockets in every room and give teachers the opportunity to make sure that if they feel that cellphones are an issue in their class or they'd rather kids leave them at the door on the way in and pick them up on the way out, we're going to, you know, we're going to put that into place for all teachers that want that.
I was a little surprised by the student rep last year when he told us how much the phones were being used during the class, like the amount of time during the day. I think we were all a little bit, our eyes were open to that coming from the student.
Yeah. I, our students have been very candid and forthright. One of the older kids said, I think you need to do something before the younger kids get up here because they live with these things. Now, we say that about the high school kids. So I guess it kind of flows downhill as we go. You know, but their input is really quite valuable in understanding the situation. And I have to tell you, every, every student that I have spoken with has been very forthright and honest. And I've been slightly surprised by all of their answers, very happily surprised because they were really candid and honest answers.
Whatever you guys come up with. Maybe we shouldn't use the words illegal or banned, though. That seems just like such an extreme.
I'm much more concerned. I'm not really that worried. I mean, when it started and I was against the whole thing back when it was bring your device, I was concerned about, you know, cheating and breaking rules and whatnot. Now, I'm, like you said, it's, it's less than a hand. So I'm much more concerned about these kids. Like the kid, if I didn't have my phone, I wouldn't have any friends. Is that because you always had your phone since, or, you know? You don't, they don't? You walk down the hallway, they're all like that. And, you know, I, I would love to take it, not take it, not have it and force people to talk to one another and create a, you know, a class, a camaraderie, a cohort. I think it's a double-edged sword, but.
I don't think, I don't think completely one way or completely the other way is the right answer. I think the balance to create times during the day where you really have to interact with your teachers and with your peers and, and times during the day where, you know, I think there's a certain amount of anxiety that comes with this generation for not being able to check their phone. You know, I, I see my 22 and 24-year-old when they misplace their phone.
Ask them to place a phone call. You're holding your phone. Place a phone call. Let me see you do it. And they'll vapor lock.
Yeah. So, so I do think there'll be balance in it. And, but it's something that Mr. Rush and I have met and spoken about over the summer. You know, elementary really has a lot less issues with it. Even the elementary kids on the advisory council, many of them said, I don't have a cellphone, you know? And so it was, you know, it was a little bit different, you know? But we'll continue to work on it.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any old business? Okay, the superintendent's report, Dr. Morrow.
Yep, so summer work is underway. Anybody who's been in any of our buildings can see floors ripped up and desks out and equipment all over the place. And our guys always do a fantastic job keeping our buildings looking absolutely brand-new, even though we have parts of our building that are over 100 years old. And you'd never guess by walking around it. So there is a great deal of summer work going on inside and out. I'm excited to see, you know, the basketball courts here, which are kind of dipping and have grass going in the middle of them. We wanted to do them last year, but our bid was extremely high. So we decided not to take that bid. And I believe this year's came back a little bit lower. And I think it came back actually significantly lower. So we're going to do those courts, level them out. And they do get a great deal of use. We're all going to put pickleball on, on the courts so that we will have a place for some people to play pickleball along with the basketball setup that's there now. So I'm excited for all the summer work. It's a little boring here without kids in the building, but it is exciting to see the things that are going on and, and I'm sure the summer will go fast. The other thing I just wanted to mention was we're working with Parent Square. Parent Square is a communication company. I sent a letter home third quarter, fourth quarter this year. They're going to take the place of School Messenger. So they will be our mass communication system when we have closings and the such. But they do a great deal more than that. They, they have an app that you download. We can push out our social media feeds on it, our pictures on it, our news articles on it. They also do what's called smart sites, which is the management of our website. So if any of you have a chance to look at the new website, we rolled it out first of this month. We're still transitioning some, some information from the old site to the new, but it's graphically significantly nicer. It's a lot easier for us to be able to use in district and it gives us the opportunity to train more people on updating it rather than having an individual person that updates our website. So Parent Square is something that we're really very excited about. There are, I think, in excess of 50 Suffolk, 50 Long Island districts that have already gone to it. It is app-based. All the research you find is the communication with the generation of people that have kids in school now. Cellphones and apps is how they get most of their information. Email is my generation. So if you ask my kids, they would tell you it's old. So I'm excited to have a better and more effective way to communicate with our families about all of the wonderful goings-on around the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That brings us to personnel. The superintendent's recommendations are as follows. Employees entering the district, full-time, permanent. Martha Carrero, she will be our new NJROTC instructor. She will begin on January 6, 2029. Samantha Lieberman will be our math teacher. Her effective date will be January 13, 2025 through January 13, 2029. And then we've got, I'm going to go through these really quickly. Summer support services, Karen Burns and Jeanette Cooper. Technology work over the summer, Jason Wesnowski and Eric Keel. Student job experience, Nicole Health. Curriculum writing, Ivan Santiago and Delia McBride. They'll be doing AP world and Christine Cassidy, excuse me, I'm sorry, I want to look up Christine Cassidy. Consolidate grant coordinator for the 2024-2025 year is Lisa Simonetti. Translation and interpretation, Miriam Hurekhtes. SSD coordinator, Francesca Riordan. PSAT coordinator, Joe Krimi. AP coordinator, Joseph Krimi, I should say. ACT coordinator, Francesca Riordan. SAT coordinator, Francesca Riordan. Elementary yearbook, Pam Palmer. Elementary student council will be Patty Melis. Math coordinator, TBD. Elementary talent show will be Karen Krakowski and Leah Leonard. Steam fair, Deb Kimmelman and Ken Mayer. Elementary assessments coordinator, Marlene Buffkins. Elementary accommodations coordinator, Kim Anzeli, Ansonelli. I should know these names. Elementary NYSS coordinator, Marlene Buffkins. Garden coordinator, Deb Kimmelman. Arts and education coordinator, Danielle Donahue. Music coordinator, Carl Himmlman. Elementary play club, Lisa Finney and Kate Levannick. High school and middle school assessments coordinator, Eric Keel. High school and middle schools accommodation coordinator, Christine Embriano. High school and middle school coordi, how do you say that?
Nice a slat?
Nice a slat. Nice a slat. Nice a slat, that makes sense. Nice a slat coordinator, Miriam Hurekhtes. Middle school lead teacher, Mike Carver. PM supervision, Heather Gearing. AM supervision, Kim Chuko, Kim Chilton. After-school detention, Christine Embriano. Music accompanimentist, Kelly Macaloney, Jennifer Kennedy. And then our advisors for the 2024-2025 school year. Our senior class will be Mrs. Elwood and Mr. Rooney. Junior class will be Mrs. Santiago. Sophomore class will be Mrs. Brewbaker. Fresh, Brewbaker. Freshman class will be Mrs. Embriano. High school student council will be Ms. Galano and Ms. Berberick. Junior high student council will be Mr. Carver. High school yearbook, Mr. Gosnell. Junior high yearbook, Ms. Governale. Founding, founding voices, Mr. Rooney, Interact, Ally Salmagi, Earlyak, Lori Mara. Music drama club, Elwood, Rooney, Macaloney. Easy if I just do last names, really, I guess. South Old United, Jay Santiago. Quiz Bowl, Long Island Challenge, I Santiago. National High School National Honor Society, Jim Stahl. Select choir, Kelly Macaloney. Jazz band, Carl Himmlman. Chamber orchestra, Will Fujita. Sentinel, Jim Stahl. First robotics Lego, Chris Shade, Bob Gammon. Junior high robotics, Ken Two. Safer, Christine Embriano. Environmental club, Stephanie Berberick and Brittany Galano, right?
Yes.
Broadcast media club, Jason Wesnowski. Wellness club, Ally Salmagi. School ambassador club, Jess Elwood and?
Christine.
Christine Cassidy. Film club, Justin Wesnowski. Chess club, Ivan Santiago. International club, Elsie Balquier? Is that her?
Evelyn.
Evelyn Balquier. And Deirdre Meyer. And esports gaming club in the fall, to be determined. In the winter, it'll be Jason Wesnowski. And in the spring, it'll be Jason Wesnowski and David Barick. Is there a motion to accept those advisors for the junior, senior high school?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the following coaching recommendations. Boys varsity cross-country, Carl Himmlman. Girls varsity cross-country, Denise McKeon. Boys and girls junior high cross-country, TBD. Girls varsity tennis, Mike Carver. Girls JV tennis, Alexandra Small. Girls junior high tennis, John Palmar. Boys varsity soccer, Andrew Sodasky. Boys varsity assistant, Lucas Gregonis. Boys JV soccer, Chris Rugge. Boys junior high soccer, Pete Solano. Girls junior high soccer, Courtney Kane. And girls junior high soccer, Nicole Tahada. Athletic player. Winter sports. Girls varsity competitive cheer, Lauren Berry. Boys varsity basketball, Will Fujita. Boys varsity assistant basketball, Lucas Gregonis. Boys JV basketball, TBD. Junior high basketball, Pete Solano. Junior high, boys junior high basketball eight, Jeff Ellis. Girls junior high basketball seven, TBD. Girls junior high basketball eight, Jeff Ellis. Junior high wrestling, Pete Solano. Varsity bowling, TBD. Junior high girls volleyball, Ally Salmagi. If there's a second team, then we'll add somebody at that time, I'm guessing, right?
Yes, we will.
Boys varsity winter track, Joe Carrato. Girls varsity winter track, Tim McCartell. Boys, girls assistant winter track, Bill Heine. Spring coaching. Boys varsity baseball, Greg Tully. Boys varsity assistant baseball, Gordon Cox. Boys JV baseball, TBD. The junior high red and white, TBDs. Girls varsity softball, Amanda Graziano. Girls varsity assistant, TBD. Girls JV softball, TBD. Girls junior high softball, Courtney Kane. Boys varsity tennis, TBD. Boys JV tennis, Jeff Ellis. Boys junior high tennis, Mike Carver. Girls varsity specialty track, Tim McCartell. Boys varsity specialty track, Joe Carrato. Boys and girls varsity track, varsity track, Bill Heine. Both boys and girls junior high track, TBD. Is there a motion to accept those coaching recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have additional positions. Scoreboard operator for boys and girls soccer, TBD. Scoreboard operator, boys and girls varsity JV basketball, Jeff Ellis, Mike Carver. Scoreboard operator, boys and girls junior high basketball, Andrew Sodasky. Scoreboard operator, girls junior high volleyball, Mike Carver. Scoreboard substitute, Mike Carver, Pete Solano, Audrey Graffwell. Morning weight room, high school, Joe Carrato. Morning weight room, middle school, TBD. Summer weight room, Will Fujita. Weight room substitute, Pete Solano. School wellness coordinator is Jess Santiago. And then we have a whole list of substitute teachers, which I will not read the names. They're available if you want them. And we have the same for substitute aides for the upcoming school year along with clerical subs. Along with substitute custodians, substitute bus drivers, nurse substitute. And then there's a whole bunch of people on the safety committee as well. Is there a motion to accept these?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have, should we do these two separately or does? Five three and five four. Okay, okay. The Board of Forum said it will continue grant vacation, leave, insurance and longevity benefits provided by the contract between the South Old Board of Education and the South Old CSEA to the following non-unit employees. District clerk, district treasurer and secretary of the two superintendents. These non-unit employees shall also be eligible for salary increases during the final year of employment, compensation for unused sick and vacation time upon retirement and for perfect attendance as specified in the contract with CSEA. The salary for these positions shall be determined annually upon recommendation of the superintendent and approval of the, by the Board of Education. Is there a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Memorandum of agreement, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the execution of an agreement with CSEA pertaining to a stipend for unit member William Metz. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from this one because he is a family member. Okay. There's a list of board dates. Did anybody else look these over and see if they, they work for us all? They're generally the third or fourth Wednesday of the month, depending on how the Wednesdays fall. And then we have work sessions in October, the beginning of the year. Of course, we have our budget forums and then meetings that are pretty much kind of every week.
O.C.'s vote is on the meeting.
Yes, this year, the 23rd.
Oh.
It was really in the year.
I know. Wow. So we'll have nothing to complain about. Patty, one of the works, do we usually have a work session with these budget hearings somewhere in March?
Not usually because in March, we have like one every week.
Right, that's why I thought we usually put a work session along with it in case there's something exciting happening.
Add one on to one of the.
Because that only gives us one in October and then one not until May. I thought, I just thought we, usually at one of our March meetings, we had a work session.
I know sometimes at the May one, oh, May one is a work session.
Right, I know the May one, but I thought in March. I could be, I just.
I don't know, I kind of caught one from last year's schedule. So I mean, if you want to.
No, it wouldn't be in addition.
On a meeting night?
Oh, no, it would be on a meeting night. I meant on one of the meeting, the budget meeting, yeah. Not an additional meeting, oh gosh, no.
That's what I meant, so.
Well, we can, we can decide that, I guess, as the year goes on, too. Okay. So if these dates work, we have to accept these, Patty, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings carries. District-wide safety plan.
Yeah, so the district-wide safety plan has to be posted at this time every year. There's a 30-day reading period. And then, you know, we send it out to all the district-wide safety members. There's no major changes this year. For the last few years, there were a lot of major changes because of the pandemic and COVID and virtual different things and, you know, the need to have off-site telephone and, there was a lot going on. This year, there's really not that much going on, but we did send it out to everybody. We will review it fully. Our community has access to it on our website. We take any suggestions, we'll make any changes and then we adopt and.
Do we need to do it in August?
Yeah, we do it at the late, yeah, we do it at the late August meeting before the school year starts.
We're going to be found on the website.
The whole plan was, refers to COVID-19 protocol. All that stuff has been removed.
Is it, some of it was removed, some of it like the remote communication systems and stuff?
No, this is like the very last page, paragraph or very last sentence. And it's, it looks like it was just missed.
Okay.
Because it's, it references CDC guidelines and they've changed.
Yeah.
Where is it on the website so that people can find it if they're looking for it?
Jennifer, I think, had it posted. I have to double-check now. Did we did the website?
I know.
Really haven't had a chance to review it.
Yeah, I looked at the website a little bit quickly, but I didn't. It's on there, though, correct?
Yeah.
I think it's under Safety Committee. Here we go, Safety.
You have good service.
District mission. Yeah, I'm going to have to look. I don't get great, there's service. I get, I get good service, not great. There we go.
So it's under Safety?
Yeah.
Okay, if anybody's looking for it.
If you go under, if you go under District, then Safety, the district-wide 23-24 safety plan is there. That's the one we'll be updating.
And so we adopted it at our meeting next month, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That brings us to, we need to vote on some NJROTC trips this year. Overnight trips will be basic leadership training from October 12th to the 13th.